Okay, Mr. Hilsinger.
Here.
Mr. Sneed.
Here.
Ms. Hart.
Here.
Mr. Cunningham.
Here.
Mr. Taylor.
Here.
Mr. Elliott.
Here.
Mr. Lawler.
Here.
Okay, we have seven.
Seven, yes.
We have meeting summary minutes from executive meeting, April twentieth, need a motion to accept.
Don't move.
To accept.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it seven zero. Next, we have, uh, planning commission status sheet, need a motion to accept.
Make a motion, accept.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it seven zero. We have no committee reports. So go to the first item, which is PC oh two dash twenty-three Ameren.
Good evening. The PC two dash twenty-three Ameren requested a conditional use of permit in the R two residential district to build a proposed ninety-one foot monopole style wireless telecommunication tower on a one point two acre tract located on west of Telegraph Road approximately six hundred and thirty-five feet south of Yager Road. The site is located in South County and it is outlined in red on the aerial. According to the aerial, the subject site is located in the commercial corridor of the Telegraph Road. From the preliminary site development plan, you can see that the proposed tower will coexist with the existing Ameren Electric Substation. The tower will be approximately three hundred feet away from the R two residential property line and it will be enclosed with a six-foot-tall sideproof decorative fence. Additionally, I also would like to state that Missouri Uniform Wireless Telecommunication Infrastructure Deployment Act prohibits local government from require an applicant to give information about design services, customer demand for service or quality of its service to or from an area, impose requirements regarding the appearance of towers, including the types of material used and the screen and all landscaping materials used that are unreasonable. The Telecommunication Act of nineteen ninety-six bars states and municipalities from basing, uh, the regulation of a facility on the basis of the environmental effects, including health effects of its emissions.
My memory, why do we even bring this up if it's, it's automatic, they're gonna get it anyway?
The department recommends approval for this request and we believe that the conditional use of procedure, uh, use of permit procedure is appropriate for this request. Uh, however, the department finds that, uh, barbed wire is not appropriate on the residential zone parcel nor along a ma- uh, major commercial corridor and recommends prohibiting the material. Additionally, the department also recommends appropriate landscaping.
Okay.
Mr. Hilsinger, I just want to note that Mr. Bedell has, uh, come onto the meeting, so I've noted his attendance.
Okay, so we have eight. Okay, with that, we need a motion.
Don't move.
Second.
Discussion. I think you already had a question.
Yeah, to Mr. Elliott's point, um, the way that the zoning ordinance is still constructed right now, since the use is listed as a conditional use, they, they wouldn't be able to pull a building permit without a conditional use permit. Um, so it is a little odd that, you know, the state regulations, the federal regulations don't quite align with, with what our zoning ordinance says. Um, but it boils down to essentially, we haven't updated the zoning ordinance to reflect what these two, uh, acts limit us to do.
Well, federal law trumps state and county law last time I checked.
Has this been challenged anywhere in the state?
That's a good question, Mr. Hilsinger. Um, I am unaware of, um, which, if any specific cases challenging this. However, um, you know, it is always the, sort of the purview of the planning commission to, um, perhaps hold, uh, an issue and, and to request a closed session to, to receive legal advice around, um, any of those questions. And I'm sure Mr. Burford, who is on, uh, on the call, um, could, um, at some point, if it was the commission's desire, uh, provide some, um, closed session, uh, legal advice pertaining to, to that question.
Okay. Uh, anyone else have anything to add? Seeing none, we have a motion to accept. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Let the record show eight with none opposed, and we'll go on to PC twelve dash twenty-three.
Good evening, commissioners. Before you see PC twelve dash twenty-three, Azra Selimovic, the request is for amended C eight. To permit a tattoo parlor and all C two shopping district permitted uses. It's on a tract of one point eight four acres on the south side of Heeey Road and the west side of McKenzie Road. You can see on the left that this is in South County, um, and on the right you'll see an area, aerial, excuse me, with the site outlined in red. From the larger aerial, you can note that, uh, the site is located on the corner of McKenzie and Heeey Roads. This is, uh, a copy of the preliminary site development plan. Uh, the entire, uh, multi-tenant commercial building is outlined in red. It's about a seventeen thousand square foot commercial building. For, uh, the petitioner's use, it's going to be in the one thousand three hundred and twenty square foot storefront, which is that, uh, orange box with the red arrow. Uh, no exterior site improvements were proposed on the preliminary site development plan and parking requirements are met. The proposed hours of the, uh, petitioner's tat- hypothetical tattoo parlor are from ten AM to nine PM, Monday through Sunday. The department is recommending approval. The department believes that the C eight planned commercial district remains appropriate for this site. Um, and notes the expanding commercial uses on this location over the course of a few decades. Um, and this trend was actually noted, um, as a positive, um, development by the Afton Community Plan Progress Report, which was published in two thousand and seven. Um, and the department believes that a modest sized tattoo parlor is appropriate for this location and would note that until nineteen ninety-eight, tattoo parlors were permitted by right in the C two shopping district and currently are permitted via conditional use permit. Um, and so the department thinks that the C eight planned commercial district procedure provides the requisite oversight for a use like this. Um, and now I would request a motion.
Hey, we need a motion.
Don't move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
One question about, um, the C two that we're, um, looking at approving. Does that include packaged liquor or would they need a conditional use permit for packaged liquor?
So the request is for a C eight planned commercial district and what frequently will be requested or recommended is a full range of uses from one of the districts. So what was written for this C eight, um, before, before this petition was basically all C two uses, which would include packaged liquor. There were a couple that were called out as prohibited, uh, parole office. Peter, I think there was one more use that was prohibited, but we, we recommended is the same sort of range plus a tattoo parlor. So yes, a packaged liquor store, if it met the one thousand foot buffer from another packaged liquor store would be permitted in the C eight if, if it was approved by, you know, the, the commission and the council. If there was another existing packaged liquor store within a thousand feet, no one would be able to open one here. And as a reminder, it's only a packaged liquor store if the sales, um, if over two-thirds of the sales come from the sale of alcohol.
I just wanted to clarify from the previous meeting, uh, discussion.
So as written, if approved as recommended, they wouldn't, there would not need to be another planning commission action for a packaged liquor store to come into this site if it was a thousand feet away from another packaged liquor store.
Have any restrictions on signage?
Believe there, they would be getting signs per the C two, which is, um, you would get fifty square feet for a pole sign, seventy-five square feet for a monument sign.
I think I was talking, thinking more, um, window signs. We've got one at, um, Lindbergh and Lee May Ferry that's lit up like a Christmas tree.
So we did not write in, um, specific conditions about, um, window or wall signage for this site, but if that's something the commission was interested in, we can certainly add that. Um, an example would be for the liquor store that was proposed at Telegraph and Pottle, we had added in, uh, a recommended condition that no window signage be permitted. Um, so if that was something the commission was interested in, um, we could add that here. The rule for wi- for, uh, excuse me, for window signage is that your window signs can't cover more than fifty percent of the window, but the commission could recommend prohibiting window signs altogether.
Okay.
Does it cover lighting though?
And we could do a similar for that, for that proposed liquor store at, at Telegraph and Pottle as well. We did recommend prohibiting strip lighting, LED lighting around the windows. Um, if that's, you know, we could, we could write that condition in as well. We could give it that same sort of treatment, um, that we recommended for the liquor store.
Is that okay with the first and the second?
I had Mr. Taylor as the first and then I think I had Mr. Bedell as the second, but if I had that wrong, please let me know.
So, let me get this straight. If she walks, if, if, if this tattoo parlor shuts down, so make him just put a liquor store in here, correct?
If there was any vacancy in this, in this development and someone who operated a packaged liquor store wanted to occupy it, they would first, you know, submit a, a commercial reoccupancy to the Department of Public Works. Um, and in Public Works, they would verify with the licensing division whether or not that tract, and in that case, the door to that tenant space was within a thousand feet of another packaged liquor store. Um, so technically the use is permitted, but there's other hoops they have to jump through. Um, and I, off the top of my head, I'm not sure where the closest packaged liquor store that, that meets that definition is.
But assuming there wasn't one, they could have one here, but it would meet all of the other requirements.
If they did, right. And if it was, uh, you know, the commission's will, um, you could recommend prohibiting the sale of liquor, retail sale of liquor at this site.
Very specific.
Let me, go ahead, Jacob.
I was gonna say, the current uses are C two permitted uses. So would a pack- a packaged liquor store has been, correct?
Has been permitted.
Would have been permitted at this site for, um, yeah.
Okay, I'll just hold with my, well, I'll hold with my motion then.
Okay. Any other comments?
So to confirm, is the commission interested in additional conditions regarding window signage and, and, and window border lighting?
The motions.
Go ahead.
I was just asking, is the, is that motion still on and I will second it because if I'm seconded, I, I, I'm okay with, uh, window lighting.
Being prohibited.
Being prohibited, um. If, if that motion is still, is still on.
Okay. What about Keith? You're the first.
Okay, well, I'll go with that then, that they, they can't have the, uh, window light.
Okay. Anyone else have anything to add? Seeing none, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it eight zero. And next we'll go to old business, PC thirty-eight dash twenty-two Ameren.
Good evening. PC thirty-eight dash twenty-two Ameren Tesson Ferry is a request for an amended mixed-use development district governing a point six acre tract on the west side of Tesson Ferry Road, east side of Keller Road and northwest side of Brittenger Road. Uh, the commission will recall holding this petition at your January ninth, twenty twenty-three executive meeting for the department to gather some additional information, um, which I will overview momentarily. Uh, so as you recall, this site is in South County. It is located in the southeastern corner of the Tesson Ridge, um, development, uh, well, the future site of the Tesson Ridge Development, um, off Tesson Ferry Road. This is the preliminary site development plan presented at public hearing. Um, it shows a one hundred and forty-six foot tall tower, um, which includes the height of the lightning rod. Uh, the tower area is enclosed by a six-foot-tall chain-link fence with barbed wire and the location of the, the lease area is approximately two hundred and fifty feet southwest of the closest proposed single-family lot, um, which would be in the Tesson Ridge Development. The department is recommending that the tower site be screened with a six-foot-tall decorative siteproof fence and appropriately landscaped. Um, we are also recommending that, um, as much of the existing tree cover, um, be preserved where possible. Um, and then we note that they will need to petition the Board of Zoning Adjustment for relief from the southern setback requirement. Uh, the zoning ordinance requires that telecommunications towers be set back a distance equivalent to the height of the tower from any residentially zoned property. The parcel south of the petition site is zoned R two residence district, um, and the distance from the proposed tower to that property line is, uh, eighty-seven point three feet, um, when a hundred and forty-six feet, which is the height of the tower, would be required. So as Asher just reminded you and you're aware from previous petitions, uh, the Missouri Uniform Wireless Communication Infrastructure Deployment Act prohibits local jurisdictions from requiring some additional information about, uh, service areas and from imposing requirements on the appearance of the tower, including heights. And the Federal Telecommunications Act of nineteen ninety-six bars local jurisdictions from regulating facilities based on health effects. This request was held at the January ninth executive meeting. At that meeting, the commission expressed concern about the proposed tower location within the southern setback and requested information about alternate tower locations that meet the required setback, um, as well as clarification about future plans for co-location from this tower. The petitioner responded that the proposed location provides the desired coverage for the area, um, and that the current tower is not designed for co-location. Uh, thus, the department is continuing to recommend approval of this request. Um, uh, we continue to find that the amended mixed-use development district procedure is an appropriate mechanism to permit a telecommunications tower and this will facilitate consistent zoning with the overall parent parcel. And we find that a telecommunications tower is reasonable in conjunction with the existing utility facility. Um, thus, we are recommending approval, uh, with the specific conditions of development um, that I overviewed in the previous slide. Um, so at this time, I would like to request a motion.
Okay, we need a motion.
Don't move.
Second. Wait a second. Who's the second on that?
Lou.
Lou, okay. Discussion, anyone?
Yeah, I have one question. This is Bill. As we're, uh, I guess in a position to only approve this, uh, this particular, uh, one does not meet the setback, so it goes before the, uh, zoning, um, committee?
Correct, the Board of Zoning Adjustment.
Board of, you know, zoning adjustment. Um, my question is, are they also, uh, committed to the, the, um, cell tower act or whatever? So, so basically, they're gonna have to say yes to it. That's my question.
So at the Board of Zoning Adjustment, you're only coming to the board truly if your property has some unique, um, aspect or some, an unusual hardship that's keeping you from meeting the, the prescribed regulation in the zoning ordinance. So the tower company will have to convince the board that there is no way for them to meet the setback. Um, but in terms of the interplay of the, the, the two, you know, the two telecom acts, um, the, the, the legislation still applies, but it's a little bit different as they're, to go to the board, you basically have to, um, you know, it's voluntary. No one makes you go to the board, you know, if they, if, if the board didn't grant their variance, their only, um, option, I suppose, would be to reduce the height of the tower.
Okay, so they're, they're not committed to follow that act?
All, all boards of St. Louis County and all local, and, and all local jurisdictions, they do have to take the state statute as it is, as it was, um, you know, put forward by, by the state of Missouri. Um, all local jurisdictions have to meet that. Now, how that plays out exactly in each sort of case is a case-by-case sort of basis. So the Board of Zoning Adjustment does take, is subject to, um, is subject to all statutes of the state of Missouri. Well, you know, they are looking at these actions from a different perspective and a different purview than the planning commission. Um, I'm more limited in scope.
My question is, huh, do they have the latitude not to approve it? That's my question. I understand what you're saying.
Sure. So they receive, they receive very, I'm not gonna say very similar, they receive essentially the exact same sort of legal advice when it comes to these sorts of towers. They hear the same, they hear the same legal advice that the planning commission receives from the county councillor's office. So, um, again, though, they are looking at it from a slightly different perspective and a slightly different angle. So the, the way that the, the county councillor's office, you know, recommends that the codes be applied, um, is slightly different, but they're hearing the same, they're essentially hearing the same, uh, legal advice that this commission.
I think, I think I got my answer. Thank you.
All right.
I have a question. Was there, was there a interference analysis or intermod study at all done to show that this tower won't, um, affect the nearby towers that the public mentioned that was, uh, nearby?
So not that we require of them, but that's something that we anticipate the tower company does during their site selection. But it's not something they're required nor, to demonstrate to us, nor that we can require them to, to show us.
Got it.
Anyone?
And then they have, you know, all the FFA for being so high, they have to meet those other federal rules, um, which I think sort of is where some of that interference, uh, analysis comes into play.
Okay, seeing no one else, we have a motion to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it eight zero. Um, we have one correspondence item. PC thirty-one eighty-three.
PC thirty-one eighty-three Ronnie's Enterprises requested an amendment to C eight ordinance eleven oh seventy-two as amended for a twenty-five point sex, a point six acre tract located on the south and north side of Lindbergh Boulevard and west of, uh, west side of Baptist Church Road in South County. In the aerial, the, the dashed line shows the C eight district and the solid red line outline the subject portion of the site. From this aerial, uh, you can see that the site is located within a commercial cluster and it is predominantly surrounded by residential users. This is the preliminary site development plan, which shows, uh, a building of approximately twenty-six hundred square feet and one drive-through lane. The commission may recall that last year, the Seven Brew Coffee Shop wanted to occupy the site and presented the site development plan showing a proposed drive-through only coffee shop with two drive-through lanes. Uh, the current request is to expand the building size from one thousand square feet to two thousand and six hundred square feet for a proposed Starbucks, Starbucks coffee shop. The architectural elevations are not the finalized versions, uh, but they are, but they provide a general idea of the building design given by the Starbucks. The department approves this request as, as it is reasonable expansion of the permitted users at the site and also it is compatible with the other users of the area.
Okay. We need a motion.
To accept the, or.
To accept?
Prove that.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Discussion.
Uh, do they have direct, uh, at, drive access to Lindbergh? But from the drawing, it's pretty small, so I, I can't determine it.
They do not. So you could come in Ronnie's Plaza, the curb cut you see here, um, or just off the screen to the left, there's another curb cut. I think that's the one that's much closer to the TGI Fridays. But there's no new curb cut proposed, uh, on Lindbergh.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it eight zero. Uh, no site plans?
No site plans.
Okay, for the good of the order.
So the commission may recall earlier this year, um, staff had mentioned that we are able to sign the planning commission members up for an American Planning Association, the APA membership. So we have paid for you all to have an account created. Um, so what I'm gonna show you is what, what steps you'll have to take to, to access your account. Um, so the website that you go to is planning.org. So Abby, next slide, please. So this is what it looks like. Um, it's just planning.org, or if you Googled, you know, American Planning Association, you'll come to their website. There's plenty of things that you can kind of snoop around and see without logging in, but to log in, there's a button up at the upper right. I will also send everyone an email with this link, um, and these steps as well, but I just want to, want you all to see it here. So you'll come to the website, you'll log in. And then on the next slide, you'll, you'll put in your APA ID. So they have generated an ID number for each of you that I will send you. It's unique to you. So each of you will need to log in, um, with your ID number and you'll likely have to set up your password for the first time. Uh, then, once you're logged in, I think the main place that the commissioners are going to find the kind of, um, you know, uh, information that, that's really valuable to you is in the knowledge center. So one of the tabs along the top, where the arrow is right now, is the knowledge center. And I've highlighted and read the two sort of areas where I think you'll find the most, um, sort of beneficial information. There's all sorts of publications that the APA creates, short, short, you know, little articles, blog posts, all the way to the Journal of the American Planning Association, which is our sort of peer review, sort of, it is a peer-reviewed, um, journal. So, um, I will send everyone, you know, the link, your APA ID, um, and, and the information to get started. But then I really, really encourage you all to just, you know, click around the website, um, see what's out there. Uh, and then also in the future, now that you all have logins, we'll be able to link you more directly to some of these APA resources. Uh and then also in the future, now that you all have logins, we'll be able to link you more directly to some of these APA resources um as they're relevant to the work we bring before you, or just, you know, as we find things we think you uh might be interested in. Uh are there any questions about your APA membership? Um, you know, I think you'll get into it a little bit more once you log in, but just looking kind of high level, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Before anyone jumps in, I I just want to say the department is excited to um provide this to the commission. I I'm I am hopeful that um being members of the Ma- American Planning Association proves beneficial for um each of you. Mel, almost most of our staff are are APA members. Mel and I, um you know, we have AICP after our names. That means we're American Institute of Certified Planners. Uh the American Planning Association is the uh is the entity that that does that, and it is the professional organization um for for planners and for those who are just interested in the planning process. So um like Mel said, there's a lot of, I think, really great uh information on there. Um and it we're just really hopeful that um that it may prove beneficial um for you all over time as you um peruse it and find things of interest to read about, so.
Appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mel.
Yeah, and if, when when you log in, you know, I'm happy to, you know, give me a call. We can hop on a, you know, a video conference and walk through anything, anything you guys want.
Thank you.
The only other item is is our upcoming meeting, so um I didn't put it on here, but in two weeks is the public hearing. Somehow I missed putting the May public hearing on here. So May fifteenth is the May public hearing here in the County Administration Building um at seven o'clock. We have three petitions. I believe Evelyn sent out um the documents. She did tell me that when she sent them out, she did not mean for it to use Mimecast when she sent the email. So if you're having any issues opening up the public hearing notice and the site plans that go with it, um let me or Evelyn know, because it's sent off a different way than than she int- intended. But other than that, then we'll have our 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 June meetings, an executive meeting on the fifth, and then the public hearing will be the second week of June instead of the third, because the county will be closed for for Juneteenth on the nineteenth of June.
Okay. And with that, we need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Eyes have it eight zero, and we'll see you on the fifteenth.
See you on the fifteenth, everyone. Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Have a good week.